I guess actually after the new chairs.
All right, we're gonna state the pledge allegiance first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, this is reorganization meeting. Go ahead Linda, if you want to go down a list, that's fine with me.
Motion to appoint Fran as chairperson.
I second that. I make a motion to appoint Fran as chairperson.
Second.
What's going on? I don't know, you say, somebody says you say second. I second, I second that.
He gets to say.
Okay, I'm sorry, I second that.
All in favor.
Aye.
Go ahead, number two.
Motion to appoint Linda Quinn as vice chairman.
I make that motion.
All in favor.
All right, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, aye. Okay, go ahead.
Motion to retain Donovan Allen as full-time licensed operator.
Make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, that's you.
Go ahead.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go number one, okay.
Motion to retain Justin Arnold as full-time maintenance operator, do I have a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to retain Nancy Rosman as secretary treasurer, do I have a second?
I'll give you the second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to set the treasurer's bond at $100,000, all, second.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to reappoint Nicholas Insurance as the insurance carrier, do I have a second?
All in favor?
Number eight.
Aye.
We're not doing.
Number eight, we'll give it back down, the township can put whoever engineers they want in there. The township can put whatever, we're gonna quote no engineers in there because if the new company takes over, they have their own, they have their own engineers. Okay, number 11.
Motion to retain Nathaniel Schmidt as the solicitor.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
What's her name, Schmidt?
Schmidt. Motion to use First Commonwealth Bank as a depositor.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to reappoint Megan Trexel as auditor.
I second that.
Forty-two hundred till forty-eight hundred.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to set mileage at 58.5 cents per mile as set by the IRS.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to allow secretary to sign the year-end reports.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to allow the chairperson to sign the year-end reports.
I second that.
All in favor, aye, okay.
All right.
Just question, have you not been appointing an engineer?
No, we're gonna.
But you're appointing this Trexel as an auditor, the township does have an auditor.
Well, we'll just do that because we'll have to send our audit out pretty quick here.
It's just that we're not going to be using Eads anymore personally, we are the water company, and we're not going to pursue a new one because of the situation with the merger.
The audit's gonna have to go out here anytime. You know, the audit's gotta be in, I think, by February or something, so it's gonna take maybe three months or something for this other to come in, so that's where we're at, okay? So we'll probably have to send it out.
That's a good question, okay, thank you.
Okay, we're going right into the meeting for the month of January 6th, 2022. Okay. This meeting will be taped and recorded. We already did the pledge allegiance. Roll call.
Nancy Rosen, Linda Quinn.
Fran, that's the same, all here.
How are you, uh, how are you writing down George?
We'll get to that under new business.
Well, we still have to show him in the roll call.
What's that?
If she's out.
Yeah, she's excused, she's, uh, been sick and.
She's excused.
She's excused, if she gets better. Okay. Okay, visitors' comments. Got any? You got any? Go ahead, go ahead, you got some?
Give me a minute.
Yep.
I think you should show Nancy that she's member and secretary.
I think she knows that, that she's a member and secretary.
Saying that you should correct your minutes to show that she's not his secretary.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying, yeah, okay. We'll put that on the next, start with the next meeting, we'll make sure that both.
I don't know that that's ever been done, but.
We can put, don't make the.
You have to clarify it.
Okay, anything else?
Otherwise, it only looks like you didn't have all three of the meetings. You have something that I said something about a contract that was not me.
That was what?
That was not me that made that statement.
Oh, but it wasn't I?
I did, I did ask about the job description to the secretary, but I didn't make any statement about a contract.
Okay, I will cross that out then, I thought that was you.
Okay.
Okay, and, uh, you're supposed to be getting a letter from the supervisor's attorney about the process you'll be going through, did you get a letter yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know about any letter, I didn't get a letter.
They said there'd be one coming, but it's not.
I'm supposed to come to the board.
Yeah.
Not, not yet, no.
Did, uh, did you get any applications for secretary?
Not yet.
Not at all?
Not yet.
Okay.
I had that concern because.
Because the township might, they might want to hire their own, we don't know that deal yet, so.
With a merger, that would be a, we'd be hiring someone and firing them right away, so I, I feel like, uh, I mean, I want to see some applications, I guess, but.
Well, let's just say we're still gonna take applications and we'll see where it goes from there, you know, and see what happens.
I don't think anybody at this point knows how long the process is gonna take. It's gonna take a month or six months?
We don't know.
Well, we've been told, we've been told sixty to ninety days is what we're told.
There's a lot here that I don't think we'll know until things start happening. Uh, you have three, three members who resigned this year. Did you see that they brought financial statements to fill out?
No.
About the effort law requirements?
We just got ours here tonight.
We have someone who quit, but they have to fill out that statement.
Yeah, we just received these, so they'll be, those, theirs will be going out in the mail.
Yeah.
Okay, one last question, Linda. When you were applying to be on the board here, did you fill out a financial statement?
I believe so.
Yeah, she did.
I'm retired, I'm on a pension.
That has nothing to do with it.
Oh, all right.
I asked her to fill out a financial statement.
Didn't you fill it out with?
Yeah, I filled something out with Jamie.
But something doesn't do, you have a financial statement right there.
She filled it out, yes, she has one here to fill out for the water company. She filled it out before they did.
When you, excuse me, when you fill out, it's attached right to your application, what you want to get into.
But she doesn't know if she filled or not.
I'm sure she did, because it's added right to it.
I'm sure I did, I will check with Jamie, but I'm sure I did.
Well, Jamie wouldn't accept it without one, you know.
She ain't gonna accept it without one, I'm sure.
Well.
So what is your question?
I want to be positively sure that you did, because when you were on the water authority before and you quit, the water authority sent you a financial statement in the mail, it was either certified or registered, and you refused to accept it at the post office, so did you ever fill it out then? For your last year on the water authority? Couple of months?
No.
No? That's a violation of the effort law.
That's good.
Does it come and get you then?
It'll come and get you. Okay, anything else?
I will check into it.
I mean, I'm not here, I don't met the laws. I'm just trying to point them out to you that that was a violation of the effort law and you didn't fill out. That's all, thank you.
Okay, nothing else? Okay. All right, approval of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Need a second? Do I hear a second?
Second, oh, I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval of the minutes of meetings, December 2, 21. Anybody got anything on that?
I just gave you two items, but somebody didn't add it?
She's got, she's got it written down to take them out, so.
Well, somebody has to put that in your motion.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the following changes, that Nancy Rose would be put down as secretary treasurer and board member, and that Christine's comment about digging be voided from that visitor comments.
I second the motion.
That was about the minutes, about the agenda.
Yes, I'm sorry, the agenda.
Okay, all in favor to change that?
I mean, the minutes, the minutes, yes.
Okay, all in favor to vote on? Okay, all in favor?
Oh, I can't, I have to abstain, because I wasn't on the board.
Okay, I'll vote on it, Nancy, you second it?
Second that.
Okay, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
And she's mistaining from it because she wasn't here. Okay, treasurer's report. Anybody got any questions? You want to go ahead, Nancy, and read that off?
What's wrong?
Treasurer's report.
Balance and checking account is of eleven, thirty twenty-one, forty thousand five fifty-one sixty-three. Deposits, water payments, four thousand three seventy-five sixty-seven. Interest income, one dollar thirty-five cents, transfer from savings, fifteen thousand. Total deposits, nineteen thousand three seventy-seven oh two. Less accounts payable of thirty-five thousand one thirteen eighty-four. Balance and checking account is of twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-one, twenty-four thousand eight fourteen eighty-one. First Commonwealth Capital Improvement Account, balance and savings account, eleven thirty twenty twenty-one, two hundred fifty-six thousand three sixty-five zero three cents. Interest income, eight dollars and sixty-four cents. Transfer into checking account, fifteen thousand. Balance and savings account is of twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-one, two forty-one, two hundred forty-one thousand three hundred seventy-three dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Okay. Approval of the bills. Anybody see anything in the bills? Nobody has anything to say, I need an approval for the bills.
I make a motion to approve the bills in the amount of thirty-five thousand one hundred thirteen dollars and eighty-four cents. I can't think of anything.
I'll second that, and I, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Respondents, do we have none? None at this time, okay. None at this time, do we, none at this time. Maintenance report? Well, our maintenance guy is off right now, so he didn't make our maintenance reports, so we're sorry. Operators' report? Kevin Elliott, you want to give us a little report on that?
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward, um, we have a raw water distribution. If you look on there, it's like a 1.3 million gallon difference, but when you factor in our filter of wastes every time the plant turns on, plus backwashing, it evens out pretty close.
Okay.
Um, our hours run are down by a couple hours from last month. I put in the filter bed evaluation updates as DEP wanted, that was due on the seventh, so we're a little ahead on that. The operation and maintenance manual plus the emergency response, uh, the updates on that are just about done, I need to find, two lead and copper sample sites because I had to retract two from our regular sample siting plan because people did not want the amount of samples being taken that were being taken, so I need to find and replace those.
Do you have to find them in that area, or can you move to a different?
They can technically be anywhere on the system, but it's best if you keep it in the same areas, if it's representative.
How are you gonna find those, do you want help from?
We have one.
Some guys or?
We have one that we have access to right now, but I'm just gonna have to ask around a little bit for the second one.
What area is that?
You're on Iron Street, Big Force area.
Pine?
Yeah. I'm gonna start the standard operating procedure updates, those are the ones that are furthest out, following the NPDES permit renewal, which is for the discharge into the river from the backwash water, the basins. The permit renewal is due by the first of February, the standard operating procedures are due by the first of March, so I'll do the one that's due sooner first. Our day-to-day, we took the second unit offline to replace the inflow valve because we couldn't turn it. While it's down, we are going to be replacing the gaskets that are leaking to prevent that from continuing. I've got all my submissions done for December, and I've started about halfway through with all of the annual reports that are due by the end of March. We found a leak on Jefferson Street and we repaired it, it was a hose bar where the line where there was a joint cracked and was sprained. So we fixed that and I actually saw the plant hours cut down about one to two hours a day depending on how the flows were. I know there's another leak on the system somewhere, we're gonna try and isolate it down once Justin gets back. Another hydrant was hit outside of Vision Auto, we're replacing the one on River Road and next to Vision Auto next week. I'm not sure, we might want to revise where exactly we're gonna put in the one on River Road because it is, we might extend it out from where it is now, just put it deeper into the yard because not even a foot from where the hydrant was, there's a gas main, so they put it right on top. And so I'm thinking we dig, dig up, hand dig around it and then just kind of put a stump out further front so we're not right on top of it as we're putting things in.
Makes sense.
The one at Vision Auto, how did that get hit?
Uh, it was one of the cold days when it was a little icy on the road, and it looks like somebody went across the bridge, lost their traction, and then skidded into the parking lot, and it must have hit it at a low speed because it just pushed it over and bent it over, not snapped it off. And it looks like they backed up and then kept going up the hill. So, the hydrant itself on top looks fine, um, once we actually get it taken out, we can make sure all of the fittings and stuff aren't bent, the threads are good, that one should be salvageable, I know the first hydrant that was hit, definitely had a couple bent fittings, so I don't think that one's gonna be able to be replaced. And I'm not sure about the one on River Road.
Question on, you said relocate the River Road one on Friday's month, how far back from the original spot?
Maybe two or three feet, yeah, just enough that it's spaced out away from that gas line in case it gets.
That's, you know, being a fireman, where you come in, you hit a hydrant, I mean, okay, that, that, I thought maybe.
No, what I'm about to do.
That shouldn't be an issue, yeah.
I'd say they do have a picture, but they haven't talked to the person.
Thanks, Donovan, that was a great operator report.
Thank you.
A question too, when you do, Donovan, when you do your sample, like you did my house, do you ever go into Houston Township and do it?
No, they have to do their own, yeah, they're responsible for their own sites.
Has there been any issues there, do you know, that they come back to here?
Not that I've heard of it.
Any letter or anything?
No.
I don't know that, I don't know that they're really supposed to communicate to us, I would assume they would tell us if there was something.
If there's.
But I've never heard of it.
I know they fixed a lot of leaks and stuff, they've really done a good job on that.
Their usage is in half from what I hear, it's like fifty to sixty-five thousand a day.
I'm just curious if any, you know, any of their customers have any letter, call or?
The only thing, he was here at the township meeting, and he, the only thing he said is he would just like to be notified when you go on to the well. You know what I mean, so people, because everybody knows it's a different taste, you know what I mean? Or whatever, so they know, you know what I'm saying? So when you do go to the well, just kind of make a phone call down.
I just did the subfacility reports and out of the whole year last year, we were on the well for a hundred and one days, but thirty or forty of those days was like not even an hour on it, it was basically you have to kick it on, make sure it's working, and then shut it off. But because we withdrew water, I have to put that we were on the well for that day.
But that's all you used?
But we're usually, only unless there's a drought situation or we need to do it for sampling, am I gonna try and be on the well because of the quality in it. So otherwise, I'm gonna try and be on the stream.
Okay. Okay, operators' report, he already said it. Okay, we're down to old business, number one, the each group force project bill. And Nancy, you want to discuss that a little bit, so you called them today or?
Well, we have one final bill left with them for average, for an average amount of around ten thousand something, and we've been going back and forth with it with Brian Blum because we don't think we owe that much money. So I called them on January 4th and said, we have to come to an agreement that we want to close this project and that he needs to go back with his guys and see about lowering the price because we're just not paying the price that he sent us. And he was going to try and call me back today, which he did not, but I basically told them that we didn't believe that's what we owed and that we want a new price, so we'll see what happens.
We asked.
There's some negotiating.
We asked for a breakdown because when they give you the bills, and Tru, you might have seen them too, they don't give you a breakdown of the bills, and there's a cost for everything they do. And so the last breakdown, he gave me all the hours, but he didn't give me no cost. So then when Nancy asked him, he said, oh, it's for the water operator, eighty-four dollars, so we added that up into the hours and we come up with.
Seventy seven dollars. It's a three thousand dollar difference.
What should you pay prior to your last bill from their engineering?
Uh, did you, what was on that paper, up to date?
I mean, of all part figures.
You mean the total amount so far?
So other than your last bill?
I don't know the total amount.
I do have it, I can pick it out and show you.
Most of it was paid before I got there, I don't, when I come in, it was this ten thousand dollar bill that was left.
This was actually for when a string crossing was and stuff like that.
I mean, the estimated amount was like six hundred and ninety-eight thousand.
Yeah.
That was an estimated amount.
For the project?
For the project.
I mean, Eads itself.
Oh, Eads itself, yeah.
The engineer, you know, much.
Yeah.
I do have it here.
And what was, what was also interesting, they put eighty-four dollars an hour on that total hours that they gave us, and then we got into the contract with them.
The contract for that line of work says seventy-seven.
And then it says seventy-seven dollars an hour in the contract that they signed.
They can figure it out, because they sure can't seem to figure it out where it's at, so.
Well, do you send down your records and itemize, you said you think you only owe about seven thousand, so why don't you itemize that and spend it by letter to them and tell them, uh, this is what we feel we owe, if you feel the same way, show a fly.
Well, we came up with seven thousand something, if they want to come back with a lower amount, we'll take it, so that's why I didn't give them any amount.
We come up with seven thousand.
Seventy-seven dollars.
And I can show you the figures.
Then he said, well, what do you think the amount should be, and I said, well, I want to see what you come up with first, I mean, I'm not, so.
It was ninety-four hours, I don't have my phone on me.
I mean, if they want to pay less than what I, we think we, that'd be better, that'd be better.
Well, they're a good way to make it.
No, they're horrible.
No, it's not, and if I show you this real quick.
You mean you want us to tell them what we came up with from their papers?
Uh, what it would be is seventy-seven dollars an hour times nine.
Let's get all done and I will show them the actual figures, if they want to see that.
Well, I didn't have that paperwork when I talked to them, so I couldn't do it.
I'm gonna give you a copy of that. Okay, we will look at that at the end. Okay, we are going to consent order, and we already kind of discussed, you're on top of that, and you're taking a lot of care of that.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything from, I haven't heard anything from Dennis before he went to Hawaii.
Oh, I talked to Dennis.
Oh, good, good. Did he actually fill out that, maybe he filled that end of report out, he should have never really filled that out.
No, he did, I don't think he did, but I called Dennis also, he, he said he called DEP, he explained it all to them that he wasn't a circuit rider, he never was a circuit rider, and that that part of the consent order should not have happened because there was no circuit rider, and he said he explained it all to them, and they said they would review what they talked about and get back to him. But they had never gotten back to him yet, and he said, I'll call them again and see what, and let you know, but he has not let me know.
Because they said if we get that resolved, we will get most of that money back.
I, I just did the math, and at seventy-seven dollars an hour for ninety-four hours, it is seven thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Like I said, you could throw, yeah.
So the two people Dennis spoke to at DEP were Plus DeWitt and Bachman.
Yeah, that's the big cheese is there. So we've just been waiting for Dennis back, but as of right now, he doesn't even work for us.
I mean, Dennis has nothing to lose by not doing anything, so it's, I have to keep calling him is basically how that goes, okay. Also, all these reports we're sending in, we're not getting anything back from DEP, so we don't know if they're right, if they're not right, a little symbol, whatever, if anything.
If anything's wrong, I'm sure they're notified, so it's a good thing that you don't hear from, that's all I can say. But otherwise, everything's up to date.
Yeah, I'm almost a month ahead on everything, so.
Nice going, Donovan.
Yeah, you're doing a good job, we really do. And, uh, and I know, I've been seeing his books, he's been replacing the books over there, he's got books all over and he's redoing. Redoing all the rules, regulations over there in place, and it's good. And actually, a lot of work's been getting done in the plant, to tell you the truth. They got the one valve in that we bought, and you're gonna buy another valve or?
It's already bought.
We approved two valves, and the trillimeters, you put one in?
We have them there, we're gonna put them on probably number one or number two, just kind of depends on when we figure out exactly how to get them.
And I would like you to explain to her and Nancy what trillimeters are and what they do, so, because that price was a little, like twenty-nine hundred dollars or something, so they understand.
The trillimeters are what measures the dirt in the water. These ones, the old ones that we have is basically just an incandescent bulb that shines, and then it has a sensor that reflects off particles, and that's where you get the number, the new ones are laser, and they use ten milliliters of water versus a thousand in the sensing tubes, so they're much more efficient, they're self-cleaning, um, if we ever do need to clean them, it's just pulling out a vial and cleaning it out, and that's pretty much it.
So much, not much better?
Yeah, there's a lot less to them, and they're much more efficient. And one of the ones we've got has a self-cleaning head on it because it's dealing with the water before it goes through the filters. So it gets more turbidity through it before it runs through the filters, so we got the self-cleaning piece just to alleviate any extra, so it cleans itself.
Good, thank you.
I mean, I don't doubt that it's something that we needed, it's, it's just.
Now, the bad part is we need seven more of them to replace all of them.
My thoughts, I don't recall that we approved both of those. I know that one was approved, I don't remember approving both of them, and the fact that they both needed paid in one, the same month was also a problem because right now our checking is down to twenty-four thousand, which is not very, it's kind of scary.
Yeah, we just got. Yeah, we just got to spread the problem.
So we kind of got to.
But with these, once I see exactly how much water and stuff they use, I'm hoping to maybe get a grant for the others. Because if they can reduce water consumption, I can get a grant through the Saskatchewan River Basin Commission.
That's great.
For that. And if infomart comes in, they actually have people that do grant searching too, so.
Yeah, that'd be great.
There's a lot of factors, but I'm going to keep an eye on, see exactly what I can do with it.
You just have to watch the five to months.
Yeah, I don't see any other major purchases at the moment. The only thing I could see are the other valves that Justin brought up a couple of months ago that are for the pump house. We did the two in the plant, and then the two in the pump house will eventually be done for manifold flushing, so.
All right. Just give us a heads up when you're going to need them ahead of time.
Oh, yeah, we won't order them without more approval for those, just because that's what you guys.
Okay, thank you. Secretary? What is that, that?
Well, we kind of just went through that, that we haven't gotten any.
Oh, okay, yes.
Things yet for that. And CBDG, we kind of talked about that.
We talked about that. That's, we got all the meters for Burnell.
We just don't have the wire.
We don't have the wire piece, right? Or the other, the remote controls, the remote controls. So we wait for that, and we get them in, and the guys can start putting meters in Burnell. Okay, that's a good thing. And that's all paid for by a grant.
Now, the day that we received the meters, the warranty on them did begin, but it's a twenty-year warranty, so two months on a twenty-year warranty isn't kind of crazy. So I think that was mentioned when we first got them as well, the P and F one method. Just letting you guys know.
Okay. Okay, Hogan's insurance claim. Nancy, do you want to tell them where we're at on that?
Well, we got a request for payment from the Hogan's Insurance. They wanted us to pay that claim. And of course, we don't feel like the township's responsible for that. That was the force project where one of the residents had their basement and their driveway. They had problems there. So we feel it's the construction company's fault. So their insurance paid them already. They're already paid. And we turn this over to our insurance, who is going to follow up with Continental Construction.
Excellent.
And actually, their insurance is going to investigate Continental Construction also.
They're in the contract.
So we turned it all in?
We have good vibes that we won't be having to pay that amount, so. And an interesting thing about their insurance company, they never went and got any quotes for anything. They just did line items of like new furnace, paint for ceiling, this for this, and picked numbers and put it down there and said, this is the amount you owe. So there was no vendors or anything showing where the work was done or where they were going to get the material from.
What was the claim, how much?
It was almost nine thousand dollars.
For everything?
Yeah. So, which probably, I don't know. I mean, that was a bad driveway before anything happened to it.
Like I said, I know, I've been, we went down there to supervise, too.
But it is.
They were the ones that did it. It wasn't a water manager or a township employee. They were digging, and they caused the problem.
We had, we had to go back to the county, get their insurance because of the bond and that, and we shipped one to each insurance company, so that's where it's at right now.
So the insurance company already told us, we're, we're a municipality, it's the water company, that there's no way we'd be responsible regardless. So we, hopefully, that's how it turns out.
Okay, now, new business. Third fire hydrogen damage repair. Seth, we already, we already talked to that, and you're going to be, we've got three of them, and one's in and two to go.
We got him on the trailer right now. Whenever he gets back, we have, the one calls already, and it's between the twelfth and nineteenth week in a day. So whenever Vince is available, we'll have to come in to help with that.
Yeah, and you're, okay, we're getting to the next thing next. Okay, with the fire hydrants, you are going to take care of them, fire hydrants. Any ideas? See if we can fix them, because they're, they're made to fix.
Yeah, this, this latest one I definitely want to take a look at, because out of the three, that one's going to be the best chance because it wasn't snapped off. It was just pushed.
And, and the idea, when you put them in too, you, you don't want them high.
Yeah.
You want them down, because if you get that neck up too high, you bust your pipe off. You know what I mean? They're made to sit down on the ground, and there's one down here by the bridge. If you look, it's up, it's up like that.
Yeah, it's right down.
I don't know who put it in, but the neck's sticking up, coming up out of the ground about that far. And they're only supposed to be like, what, four inches or something?
Yeah, they're going to be.
Not a lot.
Up to the nozzle. Up to the nozzle, you want like sixteen to twenty inches. And the reasoning, I don't think, as a fireman, you never do it, is so you can put your knees against it to brace whenever you.
You push on your, your big discharge. If you're doing a Stewart's coupling or whatever, now with the Stewart's, it's a half turn before you had to get a hydrant wrench in, so you didn't hit it and didn't take it off.
But that's the big reason is you just want that.
You said it's roughly sixteen inches. I'm sure that's.
Yeah, I, I even have a paper for you to show you how far it's supposed to be.
But I've got the Canadian annual.
Yeah, that's good. That's good. But I see some of them are way up high. It looked like you'd hit the pipe instead of hit the.
Years, years ago, they did that one on Chestnut Street behind Triple Nickel, and I think Gabe's yard. They had the main, for the Stewart's facing the backyard, wasn't facing the road.
Okay, that sounds great. Okay, hydrants, we're down to the the tires for a pickup. We're, we're still pricing around for them, but we have to get one, because if we have a flat, that one can't be fixed. But they were pretty bad to begin with.
Yeah.
So we just have to look around, see if we can get a couple ones cheaper.
Well, I talked to Justin before he took off, and he said to get used tires, which I agree. That we should get used tires because.
Yeah, they said they're going to give you a pickup or whatever, so.
Yeah, and, but he says you should have four and not two.
Yeah, with the quality that they're in, if you does to get four, we're close enough that it won't mess anything up, four-wheel drive.
And keep the best one.
Is that, is that true?
Yeah, I would say, yeah.
I mean, it's a little truck, isn't it?
Well, it's still four-wheel drive, and they all should be the same.
Especially if there's going to be snow.
He was going to check for prices, but I don't know.
Yeah, I think he had to, he'd class the next day and then the day after that, just whenever.
Okay. Maybe you can remind him again next week to call around.
Yeah. And, and like I said, you don't have to wait to the meeting. If you call Nancy or one of the must-ones, you get together and say, hey, it's five hundred bucks or something. You get that approved before the meeting or something too. You know what I mean? And the credit cards. Did we do, did we find out where the credit cards are, Nancy?
The, I did not put that on there because that's not going to be an issue either.
Okay, I just didn't know if we got them or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we're going to go now.
And then we have to vote to excuse Joey, at least till the, through the end of February.
Okay. Okay, I have one more that we should put it on here, and it wasn't on, on this paper here. We should do, we should vote to give these guys a raise, fifty cents or something, I would say.
That wasn't done in the.
It doesn't, it wasn't shipped, no, it wasn't done in this, this year.
Oh, but we just gave them a raise, though.
Well, if you're going to get to the beginning of the year, you know, just like all the other authorities always give them something.
I know, but they didn't just.
Down your agenda.
Yes, that's why I'm saying, we'll have to put it on the bottom of number four.
Can we do it next month?
Yes, we could.
It can be red. I don't know that the township didn't just, the township didn't just give their employees raises.
Yeah, they just gave, they gave them all ready. They always do.
We do a reorganization.
Yeah, but I mean, we gave them a raise this two months ago.
But then, but.
But those were for different.
Yeah, them were for different things, yes.
Oh, I don't care. I don't care. I just thought maybe, maybe you didn't know.
I think, I think we can just vote on it now.
Okay, that's fine.
I mean, I, I would like to see them get another fifty cents.
Okay.
Well, if you're adding to the agenda, you'll make your motion.
Yeah, we're just, we haven't decided if we're going to yet.
Also, at the last meeting, you said you were going to approve your budget tonight.
I thought we approved that budget.
Yeah.
We had to have it open for the public, and you said you wouldn't approve it until tonight.
Oh, yeah, let's see here.
Didn't we approve that last?
That's what you said at the last meeting. I don't know.
Just a minute here.
Because I know we put it out. Well, let's do the.
Just a minute, just a minute. Right here it is.
Yeah, I think we did put it.
Oh. New business. December second, new business. Consent order is ongoing. Reorganization meeting will be January sixth. Where did I just see that? At six P M and seven. Just a minute. Twenty twenty-two budget is done and available at the office. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, it wasn't approved, yeah.
Okay, well, then, we're, we're, we're have to put that in because of the law. We have to say we're going to do two things.
So I make, I make a motion.
Where does it go?
We can.
First thing, you got to add it to the agenda that we're going to vote on this because it wasn't put on there.
Yeah, what part of the agenda?
We're going to make that four and five. Four is the wages, and five is going to be to approve the, the budget.
Okay.
Okay, so then you'll have to go back to township and, you know, just have we do that. So I need approval to do that.
Okay, let's start. Go ahead.
Okay, I need a motion to add to the agenda.
All right, I, I would like to make a motion to add the raise of wages for our employees to the agenda. And I would also like to make number five, the budget, to vote, to vote in the budget. To vote on the budget. What's the raise for the?
I make the motion to do, do the same, okay?
What's the, don't you have to put the amount?
Yes, well, we have to vote the amount. So I, I'd like to give them fifty cents.
Okay, what's the cost of living?
Yeah. Well, that's more or less what the township will have figured out for the cost of living on that fifty cents.
Right, so what's fifty cents?
That's what the township do.
Yes.
That was fifty cents, okay.
So I need a motion for fifty cents.
I make a motion for fifty cents raise for wages for our employees.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And that's it? I think we have anything else?
End budget.
Oh, end the budget. We're going to approve the budget. I need a motion to approve the budget.
I make a motion to approve the budget. I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And it looks like we're going to join us, so we're done.